But to start the program, I'm gonna call the Chairman of MON, Chamber of Commerce, to come and say a few words so we can go ahead and begin the program. But for now, let's go ahead and have seats, because we have a chair also. So let's invite Nelsi Yang, who is the Chairman of the MON, we saw Chamber of Commerce, who is sponsor this event, this forum tonight. Let's give a hand to Nelsi Yang.
Thank you all for being here tonight. And tonight, we are here to listen, and to learn, and get to know this candidate here tonight. And hopefully by the end of the night, you can make your own decision to who the best you will support. But I wanted to thank you, the MON Village, for allowing us to be here tonight. Mr. Wang, he's right there. Let's give him a hand. And we can't do this event without the community, and I like this to have the community to stand up and see we have a committee. The MON Chamber, we only host the event, but the committee is from the community. So I just want to express, to let you know that. And this is the committee. And we're missing two, Cabal Yang and Attorney Ju, there wasn't able to join us tonight. But this is the committee that worked very hard to make this event happen. Again, let's give him a hand. Last, I would like to thank you Brother Wang. He's sponsor the water and he's wanna give us the plus to sponsor tonight. So let's give him, Brother Wang. That's all, tonight, so enjoy. And good luck to each of you. And we look forward to having one of you to share with the community. And then the Chamber of Commerce looking forward to work with you. Thank you.
As a candidate, we would like them to say just like one minute. Don't say more than one, just introduce yourself. And you can do anything you want to say, one minute, please. Okay? Go ahead now.
Thank you so much. Alright, how many of you are excited today? Well, thank you so much, MON Chamber of Commerce, for putting together this forum. My name is Nelsi Yang, and I'm running for Saint Paul Ward Six. And to really honor our elders and also community members here today who speak the native language, MON, I want to spend a few seconds just really addressing them. So thank you so much for all of you, to all of you for being here. My name is Nelsi Yang, and it's such an honor to have a packed room today because this is what Saint Paul Ward Six has needed for over 20 years. This is the place in Saint Paul where we face the highest levels of voter suppression. And every single day, I wonder, who does, who is our ward actually working for? Because when I go out to the doors, when I call and I talk to people, I ask them, "Hey, do you know how you can get this pothole on your street fix? Do you know how you can get assistance, you know, to put down a painting for your home? Do you know how to get this fixed in your community?" There are so many people who wish that they had the answer. And what I love about our campaign is that we are going out there, engaging them, empowering them to make change with us, uplift their voices, because that is how we can actually create a community that works for all of us. And so, I would love to engage with all of you after the forum, if you live in Ward Six, and even if you have family members who live here and you don't live here, I would still love to connect with you as well. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Danielle Swift, and I am very humbled to be here. I just announced that I'm gonna be running for City Council Ward Six in Saint Paul, and I am very thankful to be included in this forum. So thank you for having me. I'm very excited to talk about issues, and it's something that I've been doing for a while as a community organizer as it is. But really, to get out and empower community to participate in the civic engagement process.
Good evening, you all. My name is Alexander Bulling, and I am also running for Saint Paul City Council Ward Six, which covers much of East Saint Paul. Quite frankly, I'm running simply to uplift the voices of those that have been marginalized the most, okay? And once we are elected, we're going to embrace policies that adequately reflect who we are as a community and abolish those that do not, okay? And I just ask for you all's support as we continue to take the necessary steps to move forward importantly to get across that finish line first. Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, hello, everybody. My name is Terry Tao. I'm a MON, a homeowner, and happily, someone who was happily raised here in Saint Paul. And I lived here with my family for over 12 years. And so I'm really excited because as many folks here, we know that the voices of folks here on the east side haven't been included in the process. And for many years in my professional personal work, I've been making that happen. So I'm really excited to come tonight to share with you all about my vision and my plans, and to also ask to engage with you all about what our future could be for the east side.
Alright, thanks to your candidates. Now, let me go ahead and start question number one. And I say, I'll repeat it, and I'll say slowly, since English is not my first language. It's alright, we bilingual these days, right? So we all can. Number one question that we drafted, we would like to ask all the candidates here. What six is rich in history and diversity with many barriers and challenges? What do you see all the top three challenges facing Ward Six? And share how you plan to address these challenges. So I'm gonna start with Nelsi, this way I will come to question.
Thank you so much for your question. You know, when I think about, when I think about why I started organizing in the first place and started getting involved politically from someone who grew up, you know, very not politicized, and then later became politicized, a lot of the reasons, a lot of the things that really energized me and motivated me to, you know, start using my voice was to really eliminate poverty, because that was something that my family experienced, how my parents came here as refugees and had to really start life from scratch and build their way up. And you know, even within my family, I saw that outside my family, all of, and so many families had the same story, had the same story around poverty. And that there are so many policies, you know, that actually perpetuate poverty in our community. Right now, I mean, you asked me about three top issues, right? Right now, we have a shortage of affordable housing. And housing is not affordable right now. We have skyrocketing costs to it. As a renter, like this is something that my neighbors and I, we talk about every single day. And we need to invest more money into any homelessness and building affordable housing in our community. Here in the east side, I talked to so many, so many older folks, you know, about two, twice, three times my age, who say, "Nelsi, I really wanna find a place to work here in the east side." But then, it's really hard for me to. So what's important to me is talking about how we can collaborate with business owners to support our small businesses, make sure they are thriving, and then also bring in jobs, increase job opportunities that pay livable wages for every single person, and also are giving equitable benefits to every single person as well. And when I'm on the phones and talking to neighbors and even myself, you know, I think that there is so much we can do to invest in our youth, invest in families, and making sure we give them opportunities, whether it's going to save parks or, you know, creating programming that will benefit everyone. Family is the most important thing that we need to protect and build here in our community. So I'm invested in that.
Thank you.
Well, I think that a lot of the issues that we see on the east side, they tend to overlap with each other. So we're talking about youth development, we're talking about housing, we're talking about business development, and all of these things, they play into each other. One of the biggest things, I think, to enrich communities is building relationships and really engaging, so being intentional about going into communities where they are not being asked what they thought, they're being overlooked. And as far as the history of these Saint Paul goes, I have learned that we have a very racist background, and there are a lot of ideologies that play into what we see today in our communities. And being honest about that, and being honest about restorative justice, and going directly to the most oppressed voices and really lifting them up. Because when we start from the bottom, then we can start to see those things fill in from the top as well. So really focusing on our youth, our young people, I think is where our wealth is at. And I think that it's important to give them hope to building a better community because it is our community. Affordable housing is something that I feel very strongly about. My background is in real estate and community development. And what I've learned about east side community is not everyone is ready for homeownership. And that's okay. We have to be able to adjust to our community where they're at and talk about renting if that's where we're at, and tenant rights. And then also give our people the opportunity to start their own businesses and get into entrepreneurship. You know, I think that as millennials, we are always looking for ideas and how we can be self-sufficient and work for ourselves, which I think is a great idea. And I'd really like to explore how we can support small businesses.
I can get the feeling already, y'all are gonna get a lot of things that seems redundant from the candidates, because we, I think in so many ways, we share a lot of the same sentiments. We just have a different way of articulating. And for me, to essentially echo what they just said, I would just say that we, people of color in particular, need to make sure that we have equitable access to not only homeownership opportunities, but also entrepreneurial-related resources. We need to find ways to make sure that we are governing through an equitable means, that is, we're asking in line with the rights of our immigrants, okay? We have a very growing population of immigrants, okay? One community that comes to mind that's not really reflective in this room tonight, but throughout our community on the east side, is the MON community, M-O-N, okay? This is a group of immigrants that doesn't even have translation in, excuse me, at no level of our government, okay? So we need to make sure that we are placing ourselves in a position to how to do we represent these individuals once we are in office, okay? And find ways to uplift the voices of those, excuse me, that fills most voices. And we do that by creating policy. And maybe our policy is that it can change, okay? When we think about what drives policy, it's culture, it's perspective, it's lived experiences, it's religion, right? And all of those things play a huge, excuse me, play a huge role in the policies that's changed. So we need to make sure that we are selecting individuals that has the true ability to adequately reflect who we are as a community. The number one issue that I think is played here on the east side is the lack of bonding. We need to be more communal. We need to find ways to work in concert with, excuse me, one another. We have a lot of great people, a lot of great organizations, and quite frankly, are doing a lot of great things. But the problem is they're not working in concert with one another. And one thing that I wanna do is I wanna figure out ways that we can bring people together and do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, excuse me, the top three issues. So housing, what would I do about it? When I was on the planning commission, we supported accessory dwelling units, which is allowing people to build tiny, well, not quite tiny homes, but smaller homes on their properties. That's something that's not citywide. So these are housing issues we could address. In terms of affordable housing, I would work to make sure we get, a lot of people think we have a lot of affordable housing here on the east side already. But that's because we have housing that isn't in the best condition. So how do we work on rehabbing housing? There are some people who want money to fix their homes, which the city has money to do. So I would work to be, I would work to promote those programs because I reinvested in my house recently, and that matters. It means I'm, I stay, and I feel that this is a community worth contributing back to. Another issue that's come up is public safety, which ranges from crime in some neighborhoods, and not big, not always a big crime, but quality of life issues. I was out door knocking, and I saw a group of cars that got spray painted. And it's little things like that that make people go, "You know, I don't really like living here." So how do we work on creating, finding some community-based solutions about doing things like planning, cutting shrubs, better lighting? Because we know that sometimes the police don't, aren't able to respond to all of our calls. And at the same time, for public safety, how do we get, you know, some of the beat officers back? Or how do we get people patrolling the streets more often? I heard from a lot of eastsiders, as I'm out on the phones and on the doors, that they don't even see too much of the police presence in their area. And sometimes we just, we're not saying all the time, but a little bit is helpful. And absolutely economic development, jobs. You know, I'm really interested in how we can create, leverage public projects for local jobs, right? As well as options like cooperatives to help support small businesses. You know, Minnesota is a very rich state, and so we just have to make sure the resources come here to our residents, because we have a lot of them, and a lot of young ones.
Thank you, candidates. Just for the audience to know that some of the questions we drafted are covering areas like business, housing, and finance. So all these questions cover in general, all these categories. But we did not tell you which ones wish, so we drafted all of here. Now I'm gonna go to question number two. I'm gonna go just for the simplicity of my keeping track. I'm gonna start with Danielle. So the second question said, "There are many issues and public opinion facing Ward Six. How do you solicit or evaluate public opinion on an issue? And to what extent should public comment or meeting attendance factor into a council's decision? Meaning, city council's decision? In other words, how do you make choices for the entire community when faced with competing ideas or voices?" So this is a long question, but just in case you didn't have it, ask me how we did it.
Yes, thank you, I got it. I was actually having this conversation earlier, and when talking to different, well, now, Ward Six is extremely diverse. We have a lot of people from a lot of different backgrounds. And when you can peel back layers of language and perspective, really, most of the east side are all asking for the same thing. We all want to be safe. We all want to have high values on our properties. We all want our kids to be safe going to and from school and have things to do. We all want the same things. And I think that our backgrounds and perspectives give us different ideas on how we can get there. But as a, as an elected official, I think it's our job to go out and to, to ask people and to be authentic about listening to what our community is saying, because the answers to our problems are in the community.
Repeat the question, please.
It's a long question, so I'm gonna go ahead and repeat one more time. "There are many issues and public opinion facing Ward Six. How do you solicit or evaluate public opinion on an issue? And to what extent should public comment or meeting attendance factor into a council's decisions? In other words, how do you make choices for the entire community when faced with competing ideas or voices?"
I think for me, it's a matter of creating the spaces for people to come and have their voices uplifted. And so one thing that I've been doing over the past few months is, I have four weekly events that take place, right? And this just goes into the accessibility that we want out of our city council member. This goes to the transparency that we want out of our city council member. We have to create those spaces for people to come. And so I have four weekly events that take place, and have been taking place, and will continue to take place all throughout the election. And if I'm elected, they will continue, okay? And that is simply to find ways to uplift these people's voices. Perspective matters, okay? And everyone has one, right? And so being able to dissect issues and move towards measurable solutions is something of interest to me. That's just how I am. I figure out what the problem is, figure out who's, who's my players and who's gonna be working with me, who's gonna be working against me. And then we figure out ways to move towards measurable solutions. And that's not gonna change once I'm in office, okay? Right now, on every piece of campaign literature, any promotional item that I have, it has my direct cellphone number. You all have my cellphone number. You call me, you ask me questions. My phone number has not changed in years. And I can almost guarantee it's not gonna change anytime soon, okay? I wanna be transparent with you all. I want you all to know that I am accessible, okay? Call me, okay? Come to that table. We have to, they say, "Oh, we just wanna seat at the table." No, we don't, because the fact of the matter is, we gotta bring the table, we gotta bring the chairs, we gotta bring the tablecloths, we gotta bring it all, and the silverware that we're gonna eat with, okay? Come, please, we have these spaces for you. Let's start this conversation now. Let's be proactive and not reactive, okay? Thank you.
So this is a body of work that actually, I mean, I've been doing for many years in my career. Going out to meeting people where they're at. I've been down at City Hall, I see who comes out to public hearings. They do not look like this room, right? And so I know that the process itself isn't really set up for folks who have busy schedules and for families to come give their opinion. That being said, I think there's lots of different places. Certainly, Facebook is a key, you know, social media is a key forum for us to get solicit opinion on. But I also think, you know, sometimes we, at the public level, we deal with hard decisions all the time, right? And we have to go back to, I think, what Danielle said, is what's core and what's really important. But we also have to be honest about the challenges we're facing, right? We want things, but sometimes they may come at a higher cost. So we just have to ask ourselves, are we ready to pay for that? And I think these are the hard decisions that public officials have to deal with. But I appreciate that a lot of people in the community are willing to come, and we also need to have opportunities to come co-create solutions together, right? So not everything needs to be top-down. It actually, our solutions come from our communities themselves. The decision to make Maryland Avenue Three lanes came from community members who lived here, right? And I think that's what a good council member does, is elevates those opinions to a broader audience. And I'm looking forward to doing it.
Alright, Nelsi.
Thank you. I really, I appreciate this question because I feel like it break, it is dismantling this belief that we have in our society where as an elected official or a person elected into office, you have to have all of the answers. And you are the savior in the community. And that's certainly not why I'm running for office. I'm running because I'm running for Ward Six people, residents. I'm running for the people who have always been marginalized in our society, in our community, which is typically people of color, LGBTQ members, and people who live in poverty, and so much more, people with disabilities. There is so much. And in order for, to have a council member who is actually getting people to the table, it means that we need a council member who is willing to go to people instead of waiting for the traditional way of politics, which is waiting for people to come to them. Because, let me tell you what, 20 years of doing that didn't work for me at all. And so, so I'm running because I want to have a very engaged community. I want to be able to live in that. I wanna be able to have round tables in the community with farmers. I wanna be able to have round tables with small business owners, with parents, with people who have disabilities, everything. And we actually need to do this, work in coalition. We need to all be at the table together. And we, we ask him, you asked me about how we make decisions when we have competing opinions. Well, I say that we cannot settle for one decision, and we cannot allow us to think that one decision is going to serve every single person. This is why we actually need to, when we create policy, we need to go back and make sure that it's being enforced. And we need to make sure that we get community input. Is this policy actually working for you? Is this ordinance working for you? How do you feel about it? What are the loopholes, or what are ways that it's not working for you so that we could actually go back to the table together and work on it? So, you know, we have to understand that we need to keep working together. Working, living in a community means that we are here for the long haul. And that is what I want to be able to do with all of you. Thank you so much.
Alright, moving along to question number three now, and that's Alexander. Number three says, "How frequent have you attended or watched city council meetings over the past year? What is the ordinance that is currently on the agenda? Describe your thought process, you decide how you would vote if you were elected." This is a very specific question, but answer to the best you can.
Absolutely. First question was, how many have I, how many meetings have I attended? Numerous. One that stuck out to me the most, one that stuck out to me the most was the Pedro Park issue. For those that don't know about the Pedro Park issue, Mr. Pedro was an entrepreneur here in the city of Saint Paul. He reached an agreement with the city of Saint Paul that says, once they, excuse me, once Saint Paul Police vacated the premises of a building that they occupied, that that building will be turned into a, excuse me, it would be turned into a park, an expansion of an existing park, okay? That deal was made, it was sealed, but that deal was not honored, okay? And if it was up to me, we would not have sold that property that was supposed to be converted into a park. It wouldn't have been sold to a developer, in my own personal opinion. It depends on a dollar, okay? As for issues that's currently on, on the docket down at City Hall, it's everlasting-changing. That's a really good question. I haven't been there in two weeks, and so I don't know exactly verbatim like what's on the agenda and how far down you're asking. So I would just add for a little clarity on timeframe, as to is there a particular issue that you have in mind that you wanna know, like how I would, oh, municipal body, okay? And in order to do so effectively, they need to understand the culture, okay? The cultures of other communities. And I feel like I've done a great job in taking a lead on making sure that I understand the MON community. That's why majority, not majority, but a great portion of my campaign team is MON, okay? That's why a great deal of my advisors are MON, okay? Because I do understand the political capital that they have, not only here in Saint Paul, but in the city of Saint Paul, okay? And I've learned a little bit. You know, one, one thing, the number one thing that I hear from the elders within the MON community is simply preserving the language, okay? Preserving the culture, or, okay? And I think that's with any culture, and they want to be preserved, right? And so I think early on, people talked about, you know, essentially protecting the fabric of the east side. And Ms. Swift pointed out the fact that, you know, like, we don't really wanna protect that, right? And that's absolutely true. But the culture of the MON community is definitely something that we wanna protect, okay? That's absolutely something. And that's something that we will do diligently and be attentive to and treat it with a sense of urgency. Again, I have four weekly events that take place, and they're not canceling anytime soon. Come, show up. I always tell people, the number one way to get your voice heard, show up. Don't expect to get invited, you're not gonna get invited, okay? Show up and show out, okay? But it starts with making sure that you're registered to vote in the homes that you're living in, okay? That's a very crucial component. If you wanna obtain true political capital, you must be registered to vote in the homes in which you live in, okay? In order to do so, you have to be at least 18 years old before election date, a US citizen, okay? Even if you've been convicted on, excuse me, of a felony, okay? As long as you are not on active probation or parole, you can get registered to vote. And if you are a convicted felon, still show up and exercise your vote. Excuse me, uplift your voice, excuse me.
Alright, so we're gonna move on to question number five, and that's to Nelsi. Question number five said, "What are your top three priorities to help MON families moving from poverty," similar question to earlier, "currently sitting at 57% to prosperity?" Sure, I will repeat it, and I will say slowly. Question number four said, "The MON community is," oh, sorry, I missed that. Okay, number five, I should cross this one out, so I won't miss that. "What are your top three priorities to help MON families moving forward, moving from poverty, currently sitting at 57% to prosperity, from poverty to prosperity?" That's Nelsi. In my notes.
This is a really important topic to me, and also a vision that I have been working every day to get toward. It's also what really politicized me, because I started organizing to eliminate poverty. It's something that we all face, no matter our race, our age, gender, background. And to me, what is really, the, one of the most fundamental things that we all need as human beings is we need a roof over our head. And so that means that we need to prioritize housing, affordable housing, and also housing that is not just for single-family homes, but also we need, we need more apartments. We need more apartments. We need more, uh, diverse, multi-level, uh, housing in terms of like duplexes, townhomes. So much more diverse, uh, housing because this is how we can actually make sure that we have housing available that matches, uh, meets, uh, families' needs, because not everyone can afford a home. Also, what is important to me is making sure that we really build, uh, uh, our economy here in Ward Six. Earlier, I mentioned job opportunities and right now, so many, uh, so many mom employees are facing, uh, are earning low wages. They're, they're low-wage workers. They have been maybe almost their entire lives, especially immigrants and refugees. And for them, uh, speaking up about the economic injustice that had, they have faced is something that they have never been allowed to do. And so I think that what, uh, one thing that we really need to work on is bringing more job opportunities here, making sure they have livable wages and benefits for everyone. And I also believe that just because you are someone who is living in poverty does not mean that you need to be deprived of having a better community. In areas where we do have deep systemic poverty, we need to make sure that we have all the, all the resources available to them in terms of green space. We need to make sure that they have really great programming around them. We need to make sure they ha- they have simple things like di- like trees around their areas. And so this is, these are minimal things that we often don't think about, but as a council member, you have to actually start thinking about trees. And you have to start thinking about how you want the community to look like. And I feel like, for me, making sure every community has an abundance is really, really important.
All right, Daniel.
I'm sorry, would you mind?
Yep, I can do that. Sorry, the mic is making noises. All right, number five, the question five said, what are your top three priorities to the, to help the mom families moving from poverty, currently sitting at fifty-seven percent poverty to prosperity?
Well, I think that, well, when I think about issues and I think about meeting people where they're at, I think about Maslow's hierarchy of needs where we talk about, first, we have to address the most basic needs of people, which are like food, water, and shelter. Um, so I think starting there, like I said, housing is kind of where my background is. Um, but being mindful about different people's lifestyles and how they live. Um, intergenerational living is something that was a new concept to me. You know, where you have, um, parents, their children, and then the grandchildren, all living within the same household. And, I mean, that right there is, is something to think about, especially when we're talking about new development and what housing looks like and how it's affordable. And, you know, if you're, if we're building one and two-bedroom apartment units, is that going to work for a family of six or a family of eight? Um, and so I think just being realistic about knowing what people need and then also having enough, um, being bold enough to go against the grain because sometimes you're gonna go against the grain. In our area is gonna be different than in McRovlin or in Highland. Um, and so it, I think it will be the responsibility of the next Ward Six candidates to be comfortable in an uncomfortable position to say, wait a minute, we're not thinking of everyone here. Um, and so my tactic would be just to be bold, um, and to be slow to make decisions and ask a lot of questions and always going back to community and relaying that information so that we can take it all into consideration when making decisions. And that's for communities of all cultures across the board.
All right, Alexander.
So, for me, it's reimagining what equity looks like for people, okay? We make up a third of the population, uh, but still get the same for the budget, okay? That's not equity, okay? And so, uh, people talk about, you know, creating this pathway to prosperity, but what does that prosperity, excuse me, that pathway really looks like for you, okay? And for me personally, um, it's making sure that, uh, we have equitable access to, when I say we, I'm talking about people of color, let me be very specific, okay? This includes the mom community, includes the Vietnamese community, it in, it includes the Somali community, the, the mom community, the, uh, 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 Hispanic community, right? Because we're all, we have all been marginalized in the space of opportunity, okay? And this is something that we really need to take a look at, okay? We need to reimagine what equity really looks like. That's the number one thing. Second thing will be to make sure that we have equitable access to, um, homeownership opportunities. And, uh, I think, uh, the lady before me alluded to, uh, you know, development, uh, excuse me, development in our communities. Well, we need to make sure that we understand that we don't need developers in our community. We can use and leverage our community to be developers, okay? Like, we can do this collectively, okay? We don't need outside people coming in and telling us how to, you know, live our lives similar to trash, right? I don't think anyone has a problem with how, uh, excuse me, with organized trash. It's more so the implementation of how it. It was just another example of government coming into our communities and telling us what is best for us, okay? And as a result, they didn't really take it into consideration of the additional fees that we are going to have hand carved, right? So we need to minimize the amount of bull crap that's going on, okay? And understand that, like, the power is really in this room. The power is really is in the people, okay? And you just gotta show up.
Terry.
Yes, thank you. At, first, we have to, poverty is not a choice. And also the way cities were built, um, it was intentional that we, we have all the pockets of poverty that we do have here on the east side. And so just like that's intentional, we need to, uh, build our way out of that, right? And we need to say, we're not, um, we can actually work, uh, work against that. We can actually, uh, to build a better community for everybody. You know, the top three priorities, we've talked about community development, about having jobs, but we don't talk about like things like the trades, which are good jobs for people. We don't often share in our communities about where the good job opportunities are. We all know about the temp jobs, right? But we don't talk about the other ones that pay livable wages for families. We also, um, when we talk about priorities for housing, it's things like, um, getting money to fix up houses. A lot of people live in, in, in multi-generational households, not really because of culture, but also be, not because they can't afford to. I've got young people who work twelve, thirteen-dollar-an-hour jobs, um, adult children who are living at home because they can't afford to, to move elsewhere. And so, and that's what keeps people from, uh, moving ahead. We all know there are things that, um, like daycare and additional costs that makes it really hard for, uh, for families to be successful. So, uh, the combination of getting good jobs, looking at housing, and also, um, and housing choices, and also really asking for more resources, right? I think Alexander talked about a seventh of the budget. We, um, we may need more here on the east side. And I would happily go down to City Hall and say, we need to advocate for more dollars, right? We can't just sit here and expect, um, you know, the, we, you know, less is less, but we actually need more. You know, the school district built a brand-new middle school because there were so many young people here on the east side. Well, if the district can ask for money for that, at the city, we can make a statement that says, well, if the population is here, the growth is here, then we need the resources here too.
Thank you. So before we go to, uh, Daniel. Well, we're gonna have to move on. You're gonna have an opportunity at the end to save your words, so you can catch up at that time. So, Joa, what time do you have now? I don't have a watch, we need, so I don't want to go over. We got a couple of questions left, for sure that audience has some.
Seven twenty-two.
Okay, so the time says seven thirty, right? So, which means we got limited time left. And however the question we get to, we may not get to all the questions that we drafted, but we're gonna have an opportunity for audience to, uh, you know, pick up some questions from the audience. So, um, let me, uh, let me make a decision here and say, this is, even though we don't get to every one of you, okay? We're gonna get to, this question is the last question. And then we're gonna turn to the audience and tune in some of your questions to, uh, Dr. Fang, also Pichang Shong, so we can, uh, ask a few of your questions too, all right? So, they, they have a question here, and then I'm gonna ask the audience to ask some questions, okay? We have a lot of questions, but unfortunately, time is limited, so we may not be able to get to all the questions. So this question is, is question number six, and that will start with candidate, uh, Daniel, okay, Swift, okay? Mom and, uh, mom's small businesses are booming, but without a lot of local support. What is your plan to make sure mom entrepreneurs are thriving?
Interpreters, entrepreneurs?
Entrepreneurs, yeah, pardon my language.
Well, I mean, right now, I don't know the answer to that. But I think that when you ask, well, what do you need? You have to ask what someone needs. Um, I think that we, we look to people who are in positions of leaderships to give us the answers. Um, we feel that they are the experts. And, and really, elected officials are regular community members, as you can see. You know, before we get into the seats, we're just community members. Um, but we have to be intentional about asking people what they need um, because then they will just tell you. You know, it's, it's not about a guessing game or trying to determine what someone else needs, but being wise enough to just go to the source and ask them what they need. Um, and so I don't know what that is. I don't know what that is, what booming small businesses need. Um, but I know that I, I have the intention to be speaking to people, um, and asking them what they need and then bringing that back so that we can implement it.
Based upon my interactions with, uh, mom entrepreneurs, uh, not only here in, excuse me, on the east side, but throughout the city of St. Paul, uh, the number one issue is figuring out ways to streamline DSI. Right now, it, it is too hard to do business in the city of St. Paul. And it doesn't matter if you're a small restaurant owner, uh, like those here at Mom Village, or if you are, um, looking to, you know, create affordable housing simply because you could afford to do so, right? At the end of the day, it is too hard to do business in the city of St. Paul, and it should not be. Uh, one thing that I would propose, um, if elected to the city council, and my team is already working on, is creating a one-stop shop, okay? Um, a one-stop shop. We have two different departments within DSI, um, and it's just, and it, it is just, the real issue becomes, it, it's a breakdown in communication, right? And, and, and it's causing businesses not to really truly thrive. Because the fact of the matter is, although we have more people of color, uh, opening businesses, right? The fact of the matter is, we're not owning, we're not owning those properties that we're doing business out of, okay? And then we have, uh, so not only are we paying astronomical rental rates, right? We now have, um, uh, different departments coming in and, and, uh, you know, uh, ticketing business owners for, uh, very small things that could be modified right then and there, but simply aren't given the opportunity to, right? And so now they got six hundred-dollar fines every two weeks this due. I mean, it's just really ridiculous right now, okay? And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a straight, I'm a sharpshooter, straight shooter, like, it's just simply too hard, okay? And, and it doesn't have to be. These are preventable things, but we have to understand the importance of being proactive. We have to reimagine how we organize, okay? If I'm elected to the city council and you have an issue, and I agree with how we move, gonna move forward, that's cool and all. But you know what I have to do? I have to go and get the support of at least three other city council members in order for us to be effective on the council. So what does that mean in, through proa- through a proactive lens? That means the same way that we are organizing in our communities, right here on the east side, that's the same way that we need to be organizing in at least three other communities. And with those people, we're not talking about bringing our groups of, and our coalitions into other communities around the city to build coalitions. We're talking about using people within the communities in which they are in so that we can be effective.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, having been an entrepreneur, I grew up in an entrepreneur family. This is a question that affects me. Have a lot of personal experience and also, um, I was the board chair at the Asian Economic Development Association for many years and sitting on that. So I know there are things we need around loans, right? How do we get people loans? And the loans we were making there at EDA weren't very, weren't a lot of money, wasn't a lot of money. It was like maybe ten thousand dollars. So we know sometimes businesses need loans, right, to help them cash for, to buy them new product. We also, um, need to ask entrepreneurs about space, right? How are their, um, um, how do we think, um, the spaces they're in? How do we think about rehabbing, uh, those spaces? How do we leverage some city dollars? Did people know there was city money to help them do facade improvements, right, um, for that? I don't think a lot of people knew that, if they owned their own building, right? And so, or sometimes you can even be a renter and you can still do those improvements too. Um, I also think, um, helping, um, mom entrepreneurs, man, they have amazing ideas. When we did the night market each year, it was mom entrepreneurs who came up with those frozen ice cream roll ideas, right? They literally went from four months from a tent to a brick-and-mortar shop. And that's what happens when we invest and bring really, uh, innovative entrepreneur ideas to the table. So that means we might need things like coworking spaces. All those other neighborhoods have them, we need to have them here on the east side. Don't tell me that we don't have brilliant minds here who have creative entrepreneurial ideas that we can grow and incubate here. You know, that would totally, imagine people start being like, yeah, look at that east side over there and all those great ideas. And that's exactly the type of entrepreneur environment we want to build. Um, the last but not least, a lot of home businesses, I know a lot of folks have home health cares and a, a home healthcare business. Um, and I, I know a lot of times that was restricted by state regulations. So it's not just a DSI issue in the city, but, um, when we look at state regulations, that we need to be at those tables, talking about those rules too, and how they impact our small businesses there.
All right, Nelson.
So I, I have so much respect for entrepreneurs here, especially, uh, you know, small business owners here in Ward Six and also our working families because I feel like every single time our city asks for more, more like tax dollars, we increase, but we have a levy. It's always like working families and small businesses who are actually making up for, for the things that we actually need funded in our community. There's been so much injustice done to them over and over, but then they're willing to do it because they are invested in community. They are more invested than like large corporations that we are all, that we, you know, we are always favoring and giving tax breaks to. And so whenever I have a choice to, to buy an, an apple from a small business or from Cut Foods, even though it costs more at a small business, I would, I would go there because I know that I'm supporting a family. And being a business owner, very expensive dream. Like, my parents, they wanted to open up a, we wanted to open up a Ying Family Grocery Store. And, but we couldn't afford it because we're poor working families, like. And, and so that was a dream we never got to, but then I still aspire to open up a coffee shop when I'm, uh, in about like ten, twenty years. And so to me, like, making sure that we actually support, uh, have a, have a, a pathway in supporting small businesses is really important because, you know, it's a, it's a, I know all of us, there are many people here who want to open up businesses. And making sure that we, we actually invest in programs that are, that are giving, uh, uh, low-rate loans to, to people who want to start up a business is really important, especially to, uh, business owners or, uh, aspiring entrepreneurs who are typically from marginalized communities. Uh, to me, what's also important is making sure that, you know, that we have a listening ear to them. And I, and I want to share something really quickly. You know, for the past four years, I've been working with, uh, a group of friends and organizers and organization to get a traffic signal put, uh, built right there by Johnson and Ames. And for four years, we've raised our voices, we've talked about the importance of pedestrian safety. We talked about how dangerous it is to actually drive your car or even just cross that street. And the first time that we raised this issue to our council member, he said to us, you need a traffic study done, but I, I, you know, we won't issue it, like, you should just stand by the corner and count the cars. Like, that's the type of injustice that small businesses face every time. We need a council member who's actually here, willing to listen and work with people and say, hey, I'm gonna work with you, I'm gonna fight for you. That's what I'm gonna do for all of you.
All right, thank you, candidates. So that wrapped up the question from the committee, and now we're gonna take a couple of questions from the audience, which Dr. Lan is, uh, bringing to me. We're gonna go ahead and ask one or two questions and then we're gonna be, uh, wrap it up here, so, uh... What time do you have, Joa? So we don't know who, uh, bring these questions, or who wrote these questions, it's anonymous, but it's a good question. And we're gonna ask one question and then we're gonna try to wrap it up a little bit to have an opportunity to, uh, a few minutes to save your words, password, then we'll open it up, okay? So this question said, uh, and now I don't have the order, so, uh, I will start with Terry because I started with Nelson earlier, so. The question said, what is your position on minimum wage? Do you support or not support? How do you balance between fifteen-dollar per hour and hurting business owners?
So I am supportive of the fifteen-dollar wage increase. I also think, um, the city did a good job listing as small business owners and putting this on a, small business owners on a longer timeline. When I talk with small business owners, they want to pay people, uh, fifteen dollars an hour, right? They know, um, and, you know, because they know that money comes back into the community with, in the form of disposable income. Let's also be clear, fifteen dollars an hour still isn't even enough to cover rent for a lot of things and transportation and all the costs that families have. But, um, but a fifteen is a, is a step in the right direction. Um, I think asking business owners, small business owners, to get there in a, on a longer timeline makes a lot of sense because they're, you know, they're trying to figure them, uh, things out too. They want to pay themselves that much money, right? And so some of them are working, you know, like, I remember working in my family business, you would work, you know, I worked maybe five dollars, right, as a young person? Maybe I shouldn't say that, but, uh, but, uh, it really is, you know, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, and especially immigrant entrepreneurs who have invested so much money. So I think that's gonna be, um, uh, uh, fully supportive and, and hopefully that will get us there and that what we'll do is, marketing and by patronizing local businesses, we'll be able to give them the money so that, so they can play, pay their employees.
All right, so, Sarah.
Fifteen-dollar minimum wage. Um, I support the, um, the concept, um, the reasoning, um, but let's be clear, fifteen, people are talking about a minimum wage, um, I'm more interested in a livable wage, okay? And understanding what that pathway to prosperity looks like for that is...
is something of interest to me. Um, I do not necessarily agree with the, uh, way that fifteen-dollar minimum wage was implemented into the city of St. Paul. I don't think, um, to their own account, members on the city council, that they actually had time to adequately hear from the small business owners that were going to be, um, or at least felt that they were gonna be impacted. We all know that they're not going to, but, um, the fact that they had to live under the notion of uncertainty, okay? Like, that, in my personal opinion, is not how a government should operate. And so, um, again, it's kinda like trash, you know, the lack of transparency, you know, uh, the lack of inclusion, uh, throughout that process. And so those are things that I would, uh, um, you know, work on if elected to the city council to make sure it doesn't happen again, okay? Um, yeah, like, we want our businesses to thrive. But the fact of the matter is, here in St. Paul, well, that's really all we have and do business, okay? And we need to find ways to uplift them. What that process really looks like right, excuse me, what that process looks like right now? I don't really know. But together, collectively, I'm pretty darn sure we can figure it out, okay?
Thank you, Allison.
Oh, this was a tough one. Um, mostly because I am a strong supporter of small businesses and entrepreneurship. Um, and I heard loudly here from small business owners that it's, it's difficult sometimes. Yeah, we wanna pay a minimum wage, but we just can't afford to. And on the contrary, uh, you need money to live. That's, that's just a fact. And we know that the living wage in the city is, is like just under twenty-one dollars. So the, raising the minimum wage to fifteen dollars isn't even cutting it, um, to making it to where you can afford to live. Um, but I think that that's why it's so important to be inclusive on conversation. You have to have both sides of those. Um, and to Nancy's point earlier, um, the taxes, you know? And, and knowing that for small businesses, um, especially small businesses of color, uh, some of, one of the biggest barriers is just working capital. You know, how can we be mindful of what we're charging businesses and taxes and things like that? How can we offer more capital and more working capital to small businesses? And so that, in the long run, they're not working and running a business just to break even, but so that they're able to afford those opportunities to people. So, um, I think having a, a constant conversation and always looking at both sides of the coin, from the worker and from the business owner, um, so that we can have a balanced solution, um, so that everyone can live, uh, live a, a life that has quality.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you. So from the, from day one, I have always supported the fifteen-dollar minimum wage. And to me, it's a issue that really hits home, because when I think about where my parents work, they've worked at the same company for about twenty years now. And in, in the span of twenty years, they have only gotten a four-dollar raise. And imagine if that was you. Imagine if you only got, if you worked where you are now, if you are working, you've only gotten a four-dollar raise in the span of twenty years. That is one of the biggest pieces of injustice that, uh, that working families have ever faced, um, in terms of like, uh, wages that are unjust for us. And so it's something that, you know, I knew from the start that I supported it. It's a way for us to actually hold, uh, a dream bigger about how we hold corporations accountable. And to me, uh, you know, I want to actually, I would actually wanna sit down and talk with our business owners, uh, uh, down the road about how this has actually been impacting them. Because, as I said earlier, we might pass, you know, ordinances in our city, but how it is actually followed through, we don't know, you know, what that's like. And so this is an opportunity for all of our business owners to raise their voices, raise their concerns, so that we can actually, you know, think about what a livable wage is, uh, is for every single person. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So this last question, I'm gonna mix it up with a final thoughts as well. And we ask the audience to be patient with us. Thank you for your patience, and this is the last question, and also comments from the candidates. So I'm gonna combine a question with, uh, your wrap-up too, okay? So you can do one minute and answer the question in the other minute, and, uh, I mean, wrapping that, telling the audience here what you are, a couple of minutes of thoughts about what you wanna do as a council member. So, the question here is from our audience saying, you all have shared very similar issues and concerns, but what are your key experiences that make you the most qualified to lead and represent the community, especially the east side Ward Six? So that will start with, uh, Alexander.
I'm gonna stand up for this one, because I like to say this.
Sure, go ahead.
So, um, first and foremost, I have lived in the conditions that this city has dedicated itself to change, okay? I am the only candidate that has been born, excuse me, not born, but raised right here in St. Paul Public Schools. So I know what it's like to grow up marginalized as a person of color in the, um, in St. Paul Public Schools, okay? We need, in my own personal opinion, someone that has the ability to tackle these challenges head-on, okay? Because it's not gonna be easy, okay? We have people not only in this room, okay? But outside of this room, actively working against our best interests, okay? And you need someone with the bold mindset to say, you know what? That's not going to, that's not happening. That's not reflective of our community, okay? But I need your all's help, okay? I cannot do this alone, okay? If you want someone that feels like they can better clearly articulate, you know, what the heck is going on, then so be it, okay? But I'm a resource-driven individual and I get things done. My number-one strength, strategic partnerships, okay? And right now, that's what the city of St. Paul needs. Someone that has the ability to muster resources and leverage them accordingly. And that's what I can do for you, okay? And that's what, what, that's what I will do for you, okay? Together, okay? Together. How do I say together in Mong? Can someone please tell me? Okay? Okay. All right. Not wrong. Afterwards, we're gonna, um, na, na yu ma, we're gonna eat. And pa, uh, drink. Okay? I've learned a little bit, all right? Keep talking to me, I need you all.
Oh, so here we're gonna go to Daniel, who gave you the last. Yeah, we're going all the way. Sure, I can read the questions. So the question said, you all have shared, meaning you answer all the questions here, similarly, issues and concerns. But what are your key experiences that you have, that make you the most qualified candidates to add to, to lead and represent the community, especially Ward Six?
Okay. I, um, well, my lived experience, for one. Just, I think when, um, a lot of times when elected officials or people who are seeking to be an elected official run, they talk about their past experiences and where they've been and, um, but for me, these, these conditions are, are still my, they're still my conditions. I'm still just a regular person to work in a job and trying to make it. Um, you know, having my own issues of homelessness within the last year even, you know, dealing with what affordable housing means for me. So these issues are still very much my issues. Um, I have been, I feel very led in what I've done. Um, and I'm very thankful for where I've been able to do work. Um, and I think that I have an interesting perspective because I work in community. Um, but I also have a background in real estate, which is really, you know, profit-driven. Um, and so I find myself in this really interesting, um, point where, where I'm seeing we need investment and we, and we need these things. And, uh, we need money, we need development. But at the same time, we need to be mindful of community. We have to be considerate and compassionate of people. Um, and so I think just being in my position, um, and working in the trenches with people on the ground, and then also being afforded the opportunities to work in, at, at tables where, where decisions are being made, um, I feel, uh, like that's, that is something that works in my favor, um, because perspective is, is what gives you wealth.
Thank you, repeat your question.
Yes. So I'm gonna go ahead and just say what, uh, the shortcut is. What are your key experiences that make you the most qualified candidate, uh, to represent Ward Six?
So I wanted to share a bit about my background. I started organizing, uh, as a community organizer, meaning that I go out into the community, reach deep into the pockets, reach to people who have never been given an opportunity to share about their concerns or believe that they can actually make a difference in their community. I'm also a union steward where I work, at Take Action Minnesota, and I represent the organizers in my workplace who, who care so deeply about making sure that every workplace is a place where there's economic justice, where we have racial justice, where we have great benefits for everyone. And in all of these, uh, in all of these like experiences that I have been a part of, some of the most, some of those, the most like disappointing is when I meet people who think that leadership is about how many years you've spent at the decision-making table. Because to me, leadership is not about how many years you've been at the table. It's about understanding how you need to, how, how to actually bring people together and how to put puzzle pieces together to get something done. That is what, what leadership is about. And it's about having heart to do it. Um, and when I think about that, I think about the campaign that we ran over in Mong Village, uh, just right, right across the street, there Johnson and Ames, that street I was talking about, uh, talking about earlier, that's super, super busy. Like, you, I've met, I've talked to people who have had to wait ten minutes just to, to make a left or right turn, or people, I met people who had to wait fifteen minutes just to cross the street. And that's actually not an issue that just like popped out of the blue. It's been there for nine, almost like nine years, for as long as Mong Village has been here. And when we, you know, so many voices were, have been silenced, you know, from that, from that situation. But when we actually started running our campaign, like, we didn't just talk about getting something done. We went to the county commissioner, we went to the city council member. We raised so much voices, we went to their office and said to them, we need this in the community. And even though they said no to us so many times, we persisted. And what you see over there right now is a pedestrian hot light where people can actually press a button so they can cross that. And also this, uh, this past weekend, when I was door knocking at One Thousand Edgerton, which is a high-rise, we, when we went there on Saturday morning, they still had heat. In the evening, their entire heating system shut down. And that they, and, and one of the residents there called so many people. She didn't know who to call anymore, but because she met me, she called me and said, hey, Nancy, can you support us? Can you do something? And three hours later, we were able to get the heat. And so, you know, leadership isn't just about getting, uh, you know, about how many years been at the table, it's about getting something done. And I just wanna really quickly say that. I met, I met an elder who, elder in Ward Six who said to me, Nancy, I'm really glad that you're running. I'm really glad that you're bold and you're not letting, allowing people to tell you, you need to wait your turn because you're someone who's young. Because we have fallen into that pitfall so many times. And he said that the east side needed change twenty years ago. And right now, it's, it's not the tilt. Thank you for doing this for the people of Ward Six.
All right, thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, well, so, um, so the question is about qualifications, Lee. Yeah, I sit at those tables. I sit at those tables. I've been at a lot of tables. I've brought people along with me to those tables. I, you know, leadership, a lot of people especially are like, well, how come I haven't seen you before? Because I'm behind the scenes doing a lot of work. I'm in meetings with community members. When community members come to call me about issues, we were talking about this issue of this new investment tool called Opportunity Zones and what it might do to the east side. We are at those tables, I'm at those tables, holding those discussions, facilitating those meetings. I have been on the planning commission, right? And it, it helps to have that inside information, but it also helps that I've been teaching and leading. In addition to that, um, I'm personally investing, right? Whether I've leveraged other money for this community or even my own dollars. I think when you, uh, you are physically here, it means you make an investment. It means for me, I want this to be a great neighborhood for my family, for all of our families, for all of our kids to grow up and thrive in. And so those are the reasons why I think which really says, I'm gonna be leading with a ton of experience, a lot of experience at those policy tables. My whole philosophy has been to bring people along with me, right? Because it's so important that we don't leave anybody behind. Because that's important, that was, um, and what's really exciting, and I think why we heard a lot of people talk about the same things today, is because we know and we understand. I mean, we are folks who understand, have the both, the, uh, the, the combination